Article 10. Folks, this is a petition article sponsored by one of our town meeting members, Brian Moss, precinct six?
Precinct eight.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Moss? Please. Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion under Article— the printed motion under Article 10 has been moved and seconded. Again, this is a petition article. If you read the pages five and six of the handout that you received for tonight's meeting, you'll see that this request at the town meeting passed a resolution opposing any newer expanded pipelines carrying fracked gas in the town of Shrewsbury in Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There are two parties who have requested—or groups who have requested time to speak more formally and to present in favor and in opposition to Article 10. Mr. Moss, as the proponent of the petition, you have the first words. we're setting up here.
Speaking of our neighbors, Westboro free cash 8.8 million. Stabilization 2.4 million.
I don't see people getting up and running.
But their tax bill is considerably higher than ours, I want to know.
Mr. Moss, the floor is yours for 10 minutes. Up to 10 minutes.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to try to answer the following questions related to stopping the proposed pipeline. What pipeline projects are there? What would passing this article do? Do we need more natural gas? Who is going to pay for the pipeline? Why should I care about fracking? And how does climate change affect this decision? Currently, Kinda Morgan provides natural gas to us, which is represented by the gray line crossing the southern part of the state. They also pursued a new—are are also pursuing a large pipeline across the north of the state indicated with the red line. As part of that project, Kinda Morgan had also planned for a pipeline called the North Worcester Lateral indicated by the orange line. Similar in that it would have brought more gas to our region. However, that was just canceled in June due to the lack of—for need for it. Alan For, the vice president of government affairs for Kinda Morgan, said that the decision to scale back this portion of the pipeline project, the North Worcester Lateral, was commercial in nature. For said that the distribution companies that would be supplied by that stretch of pipe did not see the need for it. We wanted to be as transparent about this as we could be said for, noting that there was just not enough demand for natural gas in that section of Massachusetts to require the substantial investment. Spectra is another energy company that has proposed an access northeast pipeline project. As part of that larger project, Spectra plans to add a 27-mile natural gas line that would run through Milford, Upton, Grafton, Sutton, Shrewsbury, Boylston, and West Boylston. The new line referred to as the West Boylston Lateral will bring gas to the same location in West Boylston that the canceled Kinda Morgan North Worcester Lateral that I just spoke about would have gone. The article before you recognizes the added burden to the over 400 citizens in town that are landowners directly affected by the pipeline. This pipeline is proposed to travel five miles through Shrewsbury, under Flint Pond, at Laquan Sigammon, Route 20, Lake Street, Oak Street, Route 9, Old Mill Pond, Maple Ave., Main Street, 290, Newton Pond, and running next to Shrewsbury High and St. John's. Over 15 municipalities in Massachusetts, including Amherst, Berlin, Bolton, Brookline, Drakett, and North Hampton, have passed similar resolutions in opposition to any such newer expanded pipelines carrying fracked gas in the Commonwealth. These towns are seen here in red. The proposed Kinda Morgan pipeline would have run through the northern Worcester County. However, after it met with strong opposition from communities and property owners, the proposed route had been changed to mostly follow existing utility lines across southern New Hampshire, returning to Massachusetts just before Drakett. The resolutions don't convey, not in my backyard, but rather a message of solidarity with other communities altogether saying, "Not in anyone's backyard." What about the opposition to the West Boylston Lateral? On October 22nd, during the finance committee meeting, Spectra stated there was no opposition to this pipeline. However, four days after that, on October 26th, the Boylston Board of Selectmen voted to rescind authorization to Spectra Energy to survey town land for a new—for the new proposed gas pipeline. The board also planned to send a letter voicing that it does not support the project as it's currently designed. To look at what passing the article would actually do, we can look at the town of Amherst. Just recently, with a 134-to-7 vote in favor of the article, the Amherst Town Meeting members went on record as being overwhelmingly opposed to the controversial Kinda Morgan pipeline project that would have run through western Massachusetts. If we vote in favor tonight, it would put the town meeting on record as opposing the construction of the proposed Spectra Algonquin Gas Pipeline across central Massachusetts and other similar-fracked natural gas pipelines, and as opposing any tariff on Massachusetts' ratepayers to fund construction of the pipeline. There is no directive toward local authorities nor any bylaw change, but rather an opportunity to vote your conscience and go on record and take a stand in solidarity with the other communities against the new pipelines and the role in the injustice of fracking and climate change. There is no short-term need for natural gas. Based on the information EverSource has provided in public meetings so far, Shrewsbury currently has an adequate supply of natural gas. The problem of people losing heat in Shrewsbury was more than 10 years ago, in 2004. That problem doesn't exist today due to the improvements they've made since then in the existing infrastructure. The existing infrastructure provides an adequate supply of gas to Shrewsbury residents, and it even is estimated to be able to support the new growth in the region through five to seven years, or 2020 or 2022. The new pipeline isn't planned to be in service until sometime between 2018 and 2021, and so is not relevant for the next several years anyways. If we don't build the new pipeline exist—if we don't build the new pipeline, existing customers would be okay, and it is only new customers that would begin to be affected in five to seven years. At that point, EverSource would have to stop the sales to new customers only. Who pays for the pipeline? You pay for the pipeline. Spectra will invest approximately $3 billion. Kinda Morgan will invest approximately $5 billion. And Spectra stated the project cost would be recovered from customers over the first year following the project's completion, as is typical for such capital investments. That is $8 billion in new fossil fuel infrastructure paid for you—paid by you, the customer. Renewables bring true energy independence. Massachusetts is at the end of the energy pipeline, figuratively and literally. All of our fossil-based energy sources—oil, natural gas, and coal—are derived from other regions of the country and other parts of the world, many of them unstable or hostile to the United States. Thus, all spending on fossil fuel energy, whether to fuel power plants, buildings, vehicles, flows out of state and fails to provide income to in-state businesses or employees. This exported economic value is significant, totaling almost $22 billion in 2008, when an average Massachusetts household spent about $5,200 for energy costs, with almost all of those expenditures leaving Massachusetts. In addition to the economic drain represented by Massachusetts dollars flowing out of state for energy resources, energy consumers have experienced wild price swings in long-term energy prices. The figures show both steadily increasing and volatile prices for natural gas, electricity, and gasoline. More gas equals more fracking. Fracking, also called hydraulic fracturing, is a destructive process used to extract natural gas from rock that lies deep underground. They drill a deep well and inject millions of gallons of toxic fracking fluid, a mix of water, sand, and harsh chemicals, at high enough pressure to fracture the rock and release the oil and gas. Fracking pollutes the water we drink and the air we breathe, and it's dangerous for communities and our climate. It has also been linked to earthquakes. It is unacceptable that the oil and gas industry profits at the expense of our country's drinking water, environment, and safety. The entire process of fracking—from drilling a well to transporting waste endangers the water and the health of communities. There is clear evidence of the growing damage caused by fracking. Some people who live near fracking sites have become seriously ill from polluted air and contaminated water. Others can light their tap on fire—tap water on fire due to the amount of methane in their water. The oil and gas industry isn't even required to disclose the chemicals they use in the fracking process, but many are known intoxicant disruptors and carcinogens. Are there any additional climate risks associated with natural gas? Yes. Methane, a primary component of natural gas leaks from drilling sites and pipelines, is 34 times more potent than carbon dioxide trapping heat. And that's stated 1% to 9% of all the natural gas produced escapes into the atmosphere, equivalent to the global warming emissions from 35 to 314 typical-sized coal plants. The methane leak poses additional climate risk and arose the climate benefits of replacing coal with natural gas. We need to prioritize renewable energy. Can renewables realistically provide 80% of U.S. electricity? Absolutely. A comprehensive study done by the Department of Energy's National Renewable Energy Laboratory has demonstrated that currently available renewable technologies could affordably and reliably provide 80% of U.S. electricity by 2050. Prioritizing renewable energy and energy efficiency today can dramatically reduce global warming emissions. Our mix would focus mainly on wind and solar. This proposed pipeline project simply isn't commensurate with the urgency that climate change imposes. Limiting global temperature rise to 2 degrees means not burning 80% of the fossil fuel reserves already available to us. At the rate we're going, we're going to burn through 20% in just a few decades. There's going to be some decisions made somewhere—not to dig it up, not to build distribution infrastructure for it, and to leave it in the ground. As President Obama stated when rejecting the Keystone Pipeline just this Friday, "If we want to prevent the worst effects of climate change before it's too late, the time to act is now, not later, not someday, right here, right now." Let me leave you with the following. The greatest threat to our planet is the belief that someone else will save it. And the most common way people give up their power is by thinking they don't have any. Whose side are you on? That of the fossil fuel industry, or that of the citizens whose very futures you are stewarding? Remember that you have the power tonight to choose justice over injustice and to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Folks, you are also using the screen, I understand? Okay. We have a—another presentation which will be made, including people in the group consisting of Attorney John Bonzall, representing Algonquin Gas, along with several other individuals who I'm going to ask Mr. Bonzall to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And through you to the members of the special town meeting, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am here this evening representing Algonquin Gas Transmission. And with me is Brian Cooter, who is the project manager, and Frank Gestner, who heads up the Right-Away Division. Bill Pollan is here from EverSource Energy, and Bill is going to speak first to the issue of need in this area for additional supplies of natural gas. Bill?
Hi. My name is Bill Pollan. I'm the principal system engineer for EverSource Gas in the gas engineering group in Massachusetts. And part of my responsibility is to maintain adequate system pressures under all conditions, especially winter conditions, for the entire gas distribution system. And the situation we have is that we're always trying to stay ahead of system demand. We have two very active areas in our entire distribution system. The first one is Cambridge, and the second one is the Worcester system. And we've been looking for ways to expand in our Worcester system for quite a while, and this gives us the opportunity to do so. If you could give me the first slide, please. It's necessary to understand a little bit of how our gas distribution system works. The gas distribution system in Worcester consists of two separate systems: a low-pressure system that really covers the city of Worcester, and the surrounding ring system, which is a 60-pound system which feeds the outer portions of Worcester, as well as sending gas up into Holden, West Boylston, Boylston, Shrewsbury, and then in the southern direction as well. All of this gas—all of this pipeline gas that comes into this whole area—is fed from only one take station in the southern part of the system. Now, when we had some issues with it back 10, 12 years ago, it actually started even beyond that. Back in the '90s, we found that by feeding only from one take station in the southern part of the city of Worcester, we were starting to lose pressure on the northern part of the system. So what we decided to do was develop a—what we called the cross-town feeder, which was a 200-pound lateral that cut across the city of Worcester—not in a straight line like my picture shows, but basically jagged along streets on the east side of the city to end up over at Eunice Avenue and Clark Street, right up in that area, where we were able to install another regulator to now get more gas up into northern part of the system. We started that process and that program—it was a multi-year project—back in the mid-'90s. And we hadn't finished it by the year 2004, when we—our expectations came true, and we actually lost those customers with no pressure up in the Blackthorne Road area. We finished the pipeline in 2005, just one year later. But since then, in 2008, we added more regulators, and in 2014, we added another regulator. You can go to the next slide, please. The system, as Brian has mentioned, is good for the next five or six, maybe seven years based on current growth. What we have seen has been a tremendous amount of growth, mostly because of the better price differential between oil and natural gas over the last few years. And it's really accelerated by virtue of the fact that natural gas burns a lot cleaner than oil and doesn't suffer from the oil fluctuations. Yes, there have been some price fluctuations with natural gas, but they're due mainly to the pipeline constraints into the areas. And that's what the Algonquin-Spectra program is trying to address, not just for the Worcester area, but for the other areas with their programs, all across the eastern part of Massachusetts. But upon completion of the second take station on the northern side of the city, it will allow EverSource to maintain our pressure in the system for a long time to come, hopefully until renewables can take over. The points that I want to mention that are very important is that, from a standpoint of system reliability, the second take station is really imperative for our long-term growth. You can go to the next slide, please. This one really is kind of a little bit of a distance, but it covers the entire city of Worcester, as well as Holden and the northern areas. The blue system in the center of Worcester is our low-pressure system. The other lines you see are our 60-pound system that feeds all the way through. Shrewsbury has been a particularly interesting challenge for us because, up until a few years ago, we really haven't been able to take a lot of new customers. And I know in some of my meetings with people in the town, people want gas, but we have not been able to deliver it to them. The new regulators we installed at Eunice, and also one on Lincoln Street in 2014, are now getting a tremendous amount of gas into the northern Shrewsbury area. In addition to that, with the construction of the Burns Bridge, we have now put a new 12-inch high-pressure 60-pound system main that's feeding right into Route 9, and able to support the development of SPAGs and other areas along that corridor. The big thing about what happened over the last few years is that the gas from our system had to come from the southern part, where you see that one star for the take station, and travel all the way to the north, go around Laquan Sigammon, and then come back down into Shrewsbury. We've corrected that, and that should hold us in pretty good stead for quite a while. The big thing, though, as you can see, is the location for the northern take station. That black line that I drew across the city from south to north is our 200-pound high-pressure cross-town feeder. And what this northern take station will do for us—it gives us two sources of gas from two separate facilities feeding into the central spine of the whole Worcester area that will allow us to maintain pressures for the long time to come and give us redundancy of supply, so that if there's a problem with one of our stations or with one of the pipelines, the other one can take over. The northern one we're looking at from Algonquin, the southern one does come from Tennessee. And one last point I'll make about the Kinda Morgan pipeline. When they ran into a lot of that opposition on the northern part of Massachusetts, they physically moved their pipeline twice the distance away from our point where we were going to connect off the Fitchburg Lateral. That made that project totally uneconomic when Algonquin came up and came up with a little pipeline scheme that would give us approximately the same distance. And yes, customers are going to be paying for this gas. It comes under the cost of gas and all of our rates, and everything that we charge is all based on DPU hearings and rate cases and approvals. So we're not allowed to charge anything that the state doesn't allow us to charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Could we go to slide 11 just briefly, quickly? The access northeast project actually has facilities in several different states—from New York up to Maine—but in Massachusetts, there's development in five different parts of the Commonwealth. The West Boylston Lateral that Bill was talking about—the need for that in this area in terms of EverSource's system—is one portion of that project. If we go to the next slide? And I apologize because we're very limited for time, obviously, but this slide gives you a little bit of a sense of what the project's about. It's a 16-inch diameter pipeline, 27 miles, that starts in Medway and would terminate and meet EverSource's system in West Boylston. The bottom three bullets summarize essentially what Bill had talked about, including reliability to their system. The balance of the project is really intended to address the issue that many of you are probably familiar with, and that is the balance of the access northeast project. And that is the spikes in electric rates that have occurred over the last couple of winters due to pipeline constraints. Many of us saw our electric bills go up last year as much as 40% or higher. This project is intended to cure the constraints on the existing interstate gas pipeline system into this region in order through storage—there'd be LNG facilities in the Acushion area down in New Bedford—excuse me—plus additional pipeline capacity on the existing Algonquin system that would make gas available during those peak periods in the winter and have a significant effect on electric rates. So in this area, you get additional supply, you get a reduction in electric rates, and that's region-wide throughout New England. The last couple of years, ISO New England has relied significantly on fuel oil to back up the system. You would wind up not having to use the fuel oil and coal. That also means there are air emission benefits for the region as well. I would also mention a couple of other quick things. Yesterday, I believe, the ISO New England's numbers showed 62% of the generation was natural gas and 10% renewables. Renewables are very important, but the sun doesn't shine all the time, the wind doesn't blow all the time, and the industry itself feels it needs 20 to 30 years to get to a point where it would basically be 50% of the generation, so to speak, in the region. That still needs 50%, and that's going to be natural gas. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, and thank you to both presenters for keeping within the time limits. It's very much appreciated. Let—we'll give a minute or two for the finance committee to come back up and—I'm going to ask the finance committee for their recommendation before we move on to questions Okay. Finance committee recommendation.
The finance committee does not recommend this article unanimously.
And are there questions or comments with respect to Article 10? Mr. Hale? Okay. Please, come on up. Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Hale from Selco. Selco has a longstanding mission to provide the most reliable electric grid at the best prices. It's what the commission is always focused on. We understand this gas pipeline is a sensitive issue. We haven't weighed in on the path of the pipeline. What we can tell you that, from a pure business perspective, our dependence on natural gas for reliable electric generation—and I would stress reliable—is vital to our economic well-being. In our opinion, gas pipelines are not an option, they are a necessity. In the last 15 years, there's been a dramatic transformation in the energy generation resources of our region. Around the turn of the century, there was nearly 15% of our energy was derived from natural gas. That's now pushing upwards of 50%. During that same 15-year period, there were about 40% of our energy was produced from oil and coal. That's now down to 6%. So you see the need for the gas and the expansion of the gas pipeline. Selco and its ratepayers are owners of a fairly large dual-fuel plant in western Massachusetts called Stony Brook. The operators of Stony Brook would prefer to use natural gas because it's cleaner and cheaper than the oil. It's the other resource that it can use to produce energy. During the winter of 2014, it was required to use 7.6 million gallons of oil when natural gas was unavailable because of constraints in the pipelines. So by law—why was it unavailable? Because by law, natural gas has to go to residential customers first to feed their heating load, and there wasn't available capacity to fuel the power plant that we have an ownership stake in, thus resulting in higher electricity costs that were mentioned earlier by the gentleman from representing the gas company. Now, we weren't 40%. We're happy to say that our rates only went up 11%, but others in the state did have 40% increases in their electric rates. What I think we really have is really a math problem. In the last four years and going into the next three or four years, there are four very large energy-producing facilities going offline or have already gone offline. In May of 2014, Salem Harbor, which was a coal plant, was closed. That was about 720 megawatts of power. In the end of 2014, Vermont Yankee, a nuclear facility, started its decommissioning process. And what I would say about nuclear is that it's a carbon-free resource, so we're not only losing that facility, but we're also about—as you may have read in the paper—to lose Pilgrim, another nuclear facility in the southeastern part of our state, which produces about 680 megawatts. Lastly, in 2017, Brayton Point, down in the New Bedford Fall River area, is scheduled to close. It's a coal plant, produces about 1,500 megawatts a day. All told, that's about 3,200 megawatts of power. The peak load for the entire region is about 28,000 megawatts on the hottest day in the last 10 years. So we're about to lose 12.5% of our generation resources to produce the electricity that we need. Now, if we were to use or build renewable resources to make up that shortfall—I'll try and put this into perspective for you. To replace that 3,200 megawatts, you would need to build 2,400 wind turbines. Selco was an investor in the largest wind project at the time, 2011, in the Berkshires. We have a 13% investment in Berkshire Wind. At the time that was built, it was the largest wind project in Massachusetts. It produces 15 megawatts. So, you know, if you were going to produce all that lost energy with wind, you would need 2,400 wind turbines, running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Wind only produces energy between 35 and 40% of the time. If you were to replace that energy lost with solar, you would need about 17,900 acres of land to— of land to build the solar farms on. To put that in perspective, Shrewsbury is about 14,000 acres. And solar, and that's assuming that the solar power would produce 24/7. Solar energy only produces about 15% to 20% of the time. When the sun doesn't shine, it doesn't produce energy. It doesn't produce energy in the evening. So while those are great resources and we continue to invest in them, they're not reliable baseload resources. We need the baseload, and the way to get the baseload is through the natural gas. You know, we have a 2.5-megawatt wind project on Cherry Street in Shrewsbury, it's behind the AA Transportation Building. For the month of February, it produced little to no energy at all because the panels were covered in snow. So when the snow covers the panels, you can't make electricity. Selco is not in any way opposed to renewable energy. We continue to invest in renewable energy. We have, since I've started in Selco, secured the ownership interest in Berkshire Wind. We contracted with ConEd for a 2.5-megawatt solar farm on Cherry Street. We signed a long-term power purchase agreement to purchase output from a very large wind farm off the coast of Maine which has yet to be built. We signed a power purchase agreement for energy generated from the Ashelit Hydro Project in New Hampshire. And we're working in cooperation with the town of Shrewsbury to build a solar farm or have a developer build a solar farm on the capped portion of the Ash landfill, which will generate about 3 megawatts of solar when the sun is shining. Renewable energy plays a great role in shaping the energy supply for future generations. However, they must be supplemented by either nuclear or gas to get the baseload that we need and the reliability required by homeowners and businesses alike. In closing, parties throughout the state can argue the best route for expanded national natural gas. However, the need for the pipeline is reality. Selco is not, again, Selco is not invested in the path of the pipeline. We invested in a reliable source of energy that is affordable and keeps our economy moving forward.
Are there further questions or comments with respect to Article 10? Including any questions of the people who have presented tonight? Mr. Still.
Frank Still, Precinct 8. Mr. Hale has addressed most of the points more eloquently than I ever could. I'd address fracking for a moment. Fracking's okay if proper safeguards are in place. Our federal EPA draft report issued in June says as much. The evidence of drinking water supplies being compromised is extremely small in comparison with the number of wells having been drilled, thousands. This article doesn't mention this conveniently. I think we're getting scared on this issue. Mr. Hale talks about needing baseload energy. We do need that. At some point, maybe a couple hundred years from now, we'll be off fossil fuels. But until then, we need to keep our lights on, we need to keep energy, we need to keep businesses and manufacturing places here in Massachusetts and in New England. And sending, approving this article just sends the wrong message. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Ghulie, the real Mr. Ghulie.
Bill Ghulie, Precinct 8. I think Mr. Hale and the other spokesmen for the gas industry have made it clear that there is a need for more natural gas in Shrewsbury and all of New England. The numbers are just out there, they're pretty hard to argue with. However, I share Mr. Moss's concern about fracking. But I've done some research myself, and I was quite surprised to find a very positive article in National Geographic, of all places, called "Green Fracking." And it described five different new technologies that have reduced most of the negative impacts of fracking, or could reduce them if they were adopted throughout the industry. But in fact, they are being adopted rather quickly because they're cost-effective. And that's always the motivation in business. So, as mentioned, the problems with water, for example, have been reduced significantly by two technologies, one of which is just to filter the water, another of which is to reuse the water instead of injecting it into the ground. And the injecting into the ground was a problem because that's what causes the earthquakes, it's not the fracking itself, it's the disposal of the used water. But that's very expensive for companies to keep supplying fresh water. So they have found ways around that. There's also a new technology that doesn't use water at all. It uses a carbon-based gel that is mixed with the sand and some chemicals, but not as many. It only uses 1/8 as much material as when you use water. And it gets moved into the whole stream of material that's pumped out of the well with the gas. Therefore, it is able to be recycled. So that's another way that the industry has responded to very legitimate concerns, and I think a lot of us here have those concerns about fracking. But there are, in fact, ways that the industry is now trying to resolve all of those issues. Now, this article was written in March of 2014, that's 18 months ago. So you know that those technologies had to have been developed and in use long enough for National Geographic to notice that and evaluate them and come up with a positive article about that. So now we're talking about maybe two, two and a half, even three years ago. Okay? And I don't know what the numbers would tell us about how things are today, but if they were starting to get that good two or three years ago, I think we can feel a little bit better about the fact that that whole industry has responded to a lot of pressure from people all over the country. And in fact, the Environmental Defense Fund, the spokesman Ben Ratner said that, "We're investing our energy into doing everything from science to policy to working with companies in order to maximize the potential climate advantage that gas has over coal and to minimize the risk to public health and the environment." That's a pretty strong statement coming from one of the generally very, very vocal environmental groups, the Environmental Defense Fund. So I think we have two issues. One is, is there a need? I think that's been clearly demonstrated. And the other issue is, gee, do we really want to support fracking even in some indirect way by approving a pipeline or not disapproving it? And I think that on that second issue, we can feel fairly comfortable that we're not making a horrible decision by saying it's okay to let some of that gas come here. So I would oppose this article. I think it just is out of date. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Ma'am, behind Mrs. Nichols. Okay, now I can see you. Go ahead.
Amanda Leister, Precinct 5. I'd like to speak in support of this proposal. I take issue with the fact that this sends a wrong message to pass this resolution. How can it send a wrong message to look at our own long-term sustainability of our economy? Like it or not, the world is going to have to move to renewables. If our U.S. economy does not develop along these lines, we're going to fall behind economically. I would suggest that this resolution encourages us and our state to take a leadership position in moving toward renewables. If this causes teething troubles for the gas and electric companies, I understand. But I'm more concerned about not being made to pay for a very expensive pipeline that takes us in exactly the opposite direction we need to be moving in. Thank you.
Further questions or comments with respect to the article? Yes, ma'am, behind Mrs. Shannon. Next to Mr. Adler. Just can't see you.
Hi, Beth J. Bryant, Precinct 8. Mr. Hale answered the question about the energy that was going to be coming from the solar farm going off of Route 20. But I'd like to kind of bring up the property owners, the 400 properties that this pipeline is proposed to go through. And I wanted to ask through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Moss, like, letters of opposition, have you received any from property owners or people of the town? What have they had to say about it?
Response, Mr. Moss. Have you spoken to any of the affected property owners?
Yes, we started out with, at the booth at the Spirit of Shrewsbury, where we spent the whole day talking to Shrewsbury residents, and 40 people signed letters saying to stop cooperating with Spectra, to rescind the authorization. So that was in one day. Some of those were landowners. But from that, we actually did a citizen's petition to get this on the warrant, and that was 103 signatures, 103 citizens that were in support of this article. In doing so, I ended up getting emails and calls from those that lived along the power lines. I went out and ended up knocking on the door of those citizens, your fellow neighbors, saying, you know, we have this article that poses a pipeline. When they would open the door, they would say, "Thank goodness you're here. We don't want the pipeline here. We feel alone in this, and we don't know what to do about it." So we did get some signatures, and they were happy to hear that there was opposition and that the town was taking that potential move towards that.
You have a follow-up?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
I had attended the open house with Spectra, and they kind of made the impression that they were being this altruistic, that this pipeline's going through the, you know, where power lines are through this power corridor. And I said, "Oh, so does that mean that these homeowners understand someday they could have a gas line going through their property as well?" And they said, "No." So I just think, I think we need to send a message. I think we need to approve and oppose this pipeline. There's more questions out there than there are answers. And to play it safe and send that message now would be a great idea.
Response, sir? Could you please introduce yourself again?
My name is Frank Gessler. I'm the project manager for the land in Wrightsaway. 70% of the 400 landowners that we contacted have provided Algonquin with permission to come on their land to do survey. 20% of the property owners along the route have not given us permission, leaving 10% that we're still working with. And at the same time, we're going back and we're working with the 20%. Now, what happens at these landowner information meetings is property owners come in and they provide us with their concerns. And that happens, you know, throughout all the towns and communities that we cross. Some landowners, at the end of that meeting, decide to take their permission back. The reason why they do that is they're waiting for a response from the company to see if we can make an adjustment to the alignment along the project. We're in the process of doing that. We've made some adjustments. We made some adjustments as of this afternoon that'll be shared, you know, at our next open house. And open houses are tentatively scheduled for the middle of January and also in February of next year, where we'll be able to come back, show, you know, the public along the route, you know, what the changes that have been made as a result of the questions that have been asked, you know, of the company.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Brunel.
Arthur Brunel, Precinct 1. Just some general thoughts that have been running through my head. The fracked gas is going to go somewhere. Why shouldn't it come to our area to reduce or stabilize our costs and to ensure adequate supply, as Mr. Hale described earlier? The map that we saw showed quite a few fracking states. Are all those states wrong? Mr. Ghulie mentioned EPA. The EPA wrong? There's no greener organization than the Mass Save Organization in Massachusetts. They subsidize the conversion of oil burners to natural gas with 0% loans. I did it myself. I saved $1,500 the first year. But all that aside, I'm coming up on 40 years as a town meeting member, and I'm very concerned about what debates such as this mean for our town meeting. What's the next issue that we're going to have a resolution and spend hours debating that's non-binding and will have no effect at all? Going to debate social issues, economic issues? Going to talk about animal rights? About food? About the minimum wage? Town meeting has been a very effective legislative body, in my experience, and I think we should consider that we stay being a legislative body. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, the red, next to Mrs. Hollenbach.
Hi, Diana Karas, Precinct 3. In my neighborhood alone, there have been several gas leaks, and the response is they simply drill holes in the road. There have been several different spots where they've fixed part of the pipeline but not all of it. So even though we're debating whether a pipeline should go through it, the very supply that we're receiving is actually going into the air from their way of fixing any sort of gas leaks. There's constantly gas leaks in my neighborhood. And all you're doing is drilling holes as opposed to actually fixing it where you would actually be saving on some of that gas that's just leaking off into the atmosphere. So I support this.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Cooper.
Since the main purpose of this...
Naaman, Precinct, sorry, Rick.
Richard Cooper, Precinct 1. Since Mr. Moss's main purpose of this is to limit fossil fuel consumption, should we also consider banning all people born in this millennium from driving gasoline cars in town? What other, you know, that would force people to go into electric cars? How else? I mean, I just find it's a little absurd to say no new growth in the state of Massachusetts until we can develop infrastructure for renewables. You try and build a windmill? People petition in any mountainous community to not have windmills anywhere near the town, put up ridiculous restrictions. My parents lived in Maine. The town that they lived in passed restrictions against windmills. They could only build one every, unless it was within several mi... I think had to have a five-mile radius round windmill from houses that basically said no windmills. You tried to build the windows on the Cape, a lot of opposition to that on aesthetic grounds. I just don't think you can legislate everything before it's time. I mean, I don't think the time has come for this.
Further questions and comments? Mr. Campanello.
Paul Campanello, Precinct 7. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, a motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. I will note that there were a number of hands still in the air when the motion was made. This is a motion to end debate on the article before us. This motion is not debatable and must be voted on immediately. So just to remind you folks, a vote in favor of this motion is a vote to end discussion of Article 10 and proceed to an immediate vote on the motion under Article 10. A no vote on the motion for the previous question is a vote to continue the discussion of Article 10, and this motion requires a majority vote to pass. With all those in favor of the motion... Would all those in favor of the motion to end debate on Article 10 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion passes by a majority vote. We will now proceed to an immediate vote on the motion under Article 10. This motion requires a majority vote to pass. Will all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 10 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion is defeated. Mr. Moss? Are there any other people who are in doubt about the vote? We would need seven hands up in the air to require a standing vote. Okay. Okay, there is a, there are a sufficient number of hands in the air to question the vote, so we will now, in accordance with our bylaws, we will now take a standing vote, and I'll ask the tellers, who were hoping they were going to get out of here tonight without having to do this job, to please prepare to record the standing vote. Okay, everyone, if you'll just please stay quiet for a few more minutes. I'm going to ask everyone first, who is in favor of the motion under Article 10, to please stand and remain standing until I ask you to be seated. All those in favor of the motion under Article 10.
Ten.
Have all tellers counted and reported their sections? Okay. Will all those, everyone, please be seated who was voting, who was standing in favor of the motion? And would all those opposed to the motion under Article 10 please stand and remain
Thirty-six.
Please remain standing, folks, just for a few more minutes. Anyone leaving before the vote is tabulated will be subject to arrest at the front door of the building. Chief Hester, you got your men out there? Okay, please be seated. We have a total votes recorded of 161 votes, yes 30, and no 131. So the motion under Article 10 is defeated. This concludes the business of the special town meeting. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to thank you all for your attendance, for your participation, for your respect for one another, and your dedication to the government of our town. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No.
Second? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.